Alderman Carr?
Here.
Alderwoman Fonseca? Here. Alderwoman Ames? Alderman Artie Woods?
Here.
Alderman Cirelli?
Here.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee for September 25th, 2025. Do I have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have two reports tonight. The first one being an update from the 2012 building codes to 2021 building codes. PZB Committee Review Number One of Three. This one will be for mechanical, fuel and electrical codes. Director Springer, do you have some comments you'd like to start with?
I do. Thank you Chairman Cirelli. So this evening we have our code consultant from SafeBill joining us remotely. So this is the first time I think we've tried the teams meeting within this kind of a context. So if we have any technical difficulties, we'll work through them. But Don Wilkins is our head code consultant and he is calling in out of state. He is with SafeBill and I'm going to ask him to introduce himself and give you a little bit of his background. Go ahead, Don.
Are you able to hear me Stacy?
Yes.
Perfect. My name's Don Wilkins. I've worked in the public sector for 20 years or so and then stepped into the private sector working for SafeBill for the last 10 and a half years. So I've had positions all the way from building inspector to chief building official. I was the chief building official of a little community you may have heard of here in Georgia called the City of Atlanta, Georgia, where I served as the building official and chief fire code official for that community. I was also the bureau chief over fire protection engineering for the Nevada State Fire Marshals Division when I was living out west. And I'm happy to be helping you all with your update and enjoy working with Stacy. Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to go ahead and give a presentation now. Don is going to be on in the background and he will be there to answer any specific code questions that I'm not able to answer, which will be all of your questions. So our, we're currently following the 2012 International Building Codes Suite and that, those codes are 13 years old. And most communities adopt building codes or updated building codes every six years. We are going to endeavor to do that in the future and maintain the six-year code, which kind of relates to a rating system where building departments are rated. And in order to maintain a high rating, which also relates to insurance rates for residents in Wooddale, we need to stay within six to seven years of the, I think six years of the current code. So that's why we're updating the codes. Right now municipalities, in addition to adopting the code itself, so each code is, you know, maybe about this thick and we're adopting a total of maybe 13 of them. In addition to adopting those codes as written by the International Code Council, municipalities sometimes, actually most of them, adopt local amendments to those codes to account for local conditions. Let's say you have ravines or you're in a high fire area or you get a lot of snow, you can adapt those codes for your local conditions. And the City of Wooddale has done that. We've adopted amendments to each code in the past. And so as we're going through these codes, we'll be calling your attention to the amendments or the changes in our local amendments that are being made to each code. Now since we're adopting 13 different codes, we didn't want to bring them all to you at one meeting. That's just too much. So we broke it down to a few codes per meeting and we're going to present them to the PZB at tonight's meeting and the next two consecutive PZB committee meetings. This evening what we are reviewing is the 2021 International Mechanical Code, the 2021 International Fuel Gas Code, and the 2023 National Electrical Code. So what I'm going to do is just hit the overview of what the changes are, basically a summary for each code. The actual blacklined documents are, were in the packet. These three codes are relatively minor, so we're not going to be too challenging tonight. And so I'll just jump into a summary of the amendments and if you have any specific questions, Don is here to respond to those. But for the International Mechanical Code, most of the code amendments that we are adopting, like the local code amendments that I mentioned, relate to the new flammable refrigerant issue. So you may be aware that the EPA banned the prior refrigerant and now the new refrigerant that we are all going to be using is flammable. And so the ICC or the International Code Council, which puts out these form codes throughout the nation, is recommending amendments to address that flammable refrigerant issue in the building code and the mechanical code. So what you're seeing is the black line or the red amendments in the code that was attached relate to those changes. This one's easy, the International Fuel Gas Code. There are no amendments being proposed. We're basically carrying forward exactly the language that exists in our current codes. And the 2023 National Electrical Code, this relates, the local amendments that are being added relate to, I'm sorry, relate to electric vehicle charging stations. So I did ask the Wooddale Fire Department to go ahead and review all of the fire codes. And one of the amendments that they suggested is being amended to this electrical code and it relates to EV charging and the potential for fires. And what they're requesting is that signage be added on the EV charging equipment indicating the location of the electrical disconnect. So if something does happen and there's a fire at one of these electrical charging stations, they know immediately how to turn off the electricity and fight the fire. I did talk with our SafeBill consultant, Don, and he and the team, there are a number of code consultants, are recommending that we go ahead and move forward with the amendments suggested by the Fire Department because it helps them to be able to fight the fires better.
Mayor, please?
Yeah. Quick question, I just thought about it. So there's going to be a disconnect, the Fire Department, and naturally it's going to be a little farther away or something. Anybody can go up, kids can go and shut them down or whatnot? Is that, or is there some kind of protection against that? I'm just curious.
Director Springer?
Thank you. I'm going to pass that on to Don if I can figure out how to. Don, are you still there?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, that's a, the mayor, the mayor just proposed a good question. It's one that I don't think we thought of or the Wooddale Fire Protection District thought of. Currently, the NEC amendments indicate the location of the disconnect through signage. I'm trying to recall, let me pull that up. I'm trying to recall exactly what the amendment said as far as location of the disconnect. Uh, let's see.
Yeah, because I, I thought when we talked, you said it had to be a little farther away just in case if things on fire.
No, that's, that's not actual, that's not actually the purpose of the amendment. The purpose of the amendment is to direct staff to the disconnecting means. So the amendment just clearly deals with signage only. It doesn't, it doesn't address location and placement of the disconnect. Oh, never, I, I'm sorry. I spoke of falsehood. It does, it in line of sight, not more than 25 feet from the electric vehicle charging station. Yeah, so I apologize for that. So it could, it could be, we could, we could go back and consult with the Wooddale Fire Protection District and have it a lockable, electrical disconnect with some sort of Knox box that would allow the Fire Department to access the lock and unlock it and hit the disconnect. They also make Knox locks versus Knox boxes with keys in them, that you could have a Knox lock on the, on the, on the disconnect with the Fire Department carrying the key with them at all times.
Follow-up question?
No, it just came to me as she was talking. I know I had some questions the other day, so.
Any other questions? Alderman Carr?
With the next locks, I know a lot of people are in construction, but locks do freeze in wintertime.
Yep.
And they're going to have to literally cut that lock off and watch the fire go until they get their tools out to do that. So I don't know if locks are the wisest decision. I get the point of it, but locks do freeze.
Director Springer, please.
I just want to clarify, was your question that the Knox boxes freeze or just locks freeze?
The locks.
Okay.
Because if it's a Knox lock, he said?
Okay.
Because I know I use padlocks and I have puck locks and I have a whole bunch of locks and they all freeze. I have to literally take a torch to warm them up.
That ain't going to work. Director Springer?
We will go ahead and pass that on to the Fire Department. I'm sure they'll have a solution and they'll be ready for that, but we'll make sure they're aware of that concern.
Other questions? Alderwoman Ames?
Back to the first amendment, the IMC. I was reading that and since it was a recommendation amending to solve the new flammable refrigerant issue, was the Fire Department also contacted on that for any flammable concerns and were they fine with whatever the amendment was for that?
Director Springer?
They were given the entire 120-page code amendments. Those are just the amendments, not the codes. The codes, I like this big on my desk. And they provided us comments on various things they had concerns with. They did not mention this though.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure they were in the loop.
Anything else? Alderman Woods? No questions?
None at this time.
None at this time? Okay. It's your last chance. Uh, no further question?
So what we're looking for this evening is a recommendation from the PZB to recommend approval of the 2021 International Code Council Mechanical Code, Fuel Gas Code, and National Electric Code. National Electric Code is the 2023 version along with the amendments that are shown in your packet.
I'll make that motion. Any further discussion, questions? Call, please.
Alderman Art Woods?
If I have to. Yes.
Alderman Cirelli?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames? Alderman Artie Woods?
Yes.
Alderman Cirelli?
Yes.
That motion carries.
All right. Don, if you're still there, thank you for coming this evening. We'll see you in a couple weeks.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you and you all have a wonderful evening.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Second item, confirmation of regulations related to housing chickens on residential properties. Director Springer, you have a few comments?
I do.
Yes.
Chairman Cirelli. So, sorry. Back in September at the PZB meeting, staff presented a review of Wooddale's existing requirements related to chickens, a survey of nearby community regulations, and some proposed language for the PZB committee to consider in response to some interest in considering allowing chickens via regulations in the City of Wooddale. Tonight, we want to confirm that the language we took away on September 25th is still accurate and that is the language that PZB would like us to move forward with. And the second thing we'd like to determine this evening is how the PZB would like to present this information to the public. Previous ways that have been raised are a survey and an advisory referendum. And so I'll move forward and this is the language, it's a little small, so maybe I will read it. This is a language that we took away from the last PZB meeting, that if we were to adopt the regulations, they would look something like this, that it would be allowed and chicken owners would need to register with the city. There would be a one-time license fee required, nominal because of the inspections and the processing involved, probably a hundred dollars or less. No more than six hens would be allowed on any property. Roosters would not be permitted. No butchering or slaughtering would be permitted and the sale of eggs would be prohibited due to the impact on local neighborhoods. Chicken feed must be kept in a road-proof container and an outdoor coop and run would be required. And it must be in, that coop and run must be in the rear yard, must be 10 feet from all property lines, must have at least four square feet per hen, can't be any bigger than six feet. The run must be attached to the coop and be covered on all sides and it must be clean and well-maintained. So first question for this evening is, is that the language? Does everybody agree we're moving forward with this, that that is the language that we would consider for the local regulations? Or are there any questions or proposals for changes?
Anybody have a comment? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, do we have language for obviously townhouses, condominiums?
Director Springer?
This is something we would propose only for single-family homes unless the council would like it for duplexes, but anything larger than that, townhomes, due to the fact they're so close to each other, it's a greater impact on the neighbors and it's harder to meet those setback requirements when some, you know, townhome units are only 25 feet wide.
I would agree, but are we going to add some language to?
We can add some language that says it would be only allowed on single-family lots.
Anybody else?
Well, we're saying that because, single-family lots, so I'm just thinking of different properties. So if I go, what's division going to the train station? Have that, I don't know what that, that's word one, I don't know what that enclave is called. But I can imagine each one of those has a lot and they're single-family, albeit the lot very small, probably contained in no more than a couple feet in front and back and then obviously the devising. So I'm just saying that the language probably needs to be broader.
Director Springer?
We could probably limit it to certain zoning classifications because
There you go.
That product that you're talking about would be in an R4 zoning district. So we can, I'll look at what the zoning districts are, but only the zoning districts that allow single-family homes and not multiple, multiples of homes.
Right, so single, all right, detached.
So is this a proposal to change the code?
This would be, but since I'm not seeing any other questions, I'll move to the.
Mayor, please?
So the referendum is a non-binding advisory. So we were going to do the survey. You maybe get 40 people or 50 people, referendum might get you more people. And again, it's non-binding, Mr. Bond can speak to more of that.
Yeah, the law allows for units of government to, by adoption of resolution, to ask the county clerk, you don't ask.
Yes, but they have to do it. To put a, it's a non-binding referendum on the ballot, it would go on the March 17th, 2026 general primary ballot. If you were to do that, you'd have to formulate, you know, what the question is. It's fairly simple as, you know, should the City of Wooddale amend its zoning code to allow for, allow for chickens, not roosters, kept as accessory use in areas that are zoned for residential and we'll have to, if that was the case, we restrict it to what that residential.
So to prepare a referendum, we have to design the code first? Attorney Bond?
No, you have to, you have to decide if you want to do that and then some of the things that were discussed here would be, the question is, are you going to allow it?
Right.
How you regulate it is the second step after this. So you've got the cart before the chicken, I guess, in this regard, just to decide if you're going to, you know, if you want to do it, this, the referendum would happen, you'd, you'd have to pass the resolution approving that before the, the end of December 29th and then you have to get it to county clerk by January 8th in order to get it on the ballot.
So if we're going to do a referendum, this is just, we don't need this yet, it's just an idea, correct?
Correct. It does give a little bit of the scope, so there would be some restriction, restricted language in there as opposed to just saying where it's zoned is to have some more, a little more detail, but you don't need to have all of the, all of the enforcement and all the regulatory provisions. It's just whether or not you want to allow those or not allow those. A lot of communities have placed that to, to, you know, have the people vote, some do it by survey, some do it by, non-binding referendum.
Okay. Manager?
One way to look at it is this information is actually important now. While we don't have all the information now, what we would do if we decided to do a referendum, obviously the city can't go out there by law and say, hey, vote yes or vote no, but we would, what we would do to educate the public, to help them make a decision, is we would put these proposed regulations out there on an informative, you know, portion of the website or in the newsletter, hey, this referendum is coming up. If we were to allow this, these would be some of the regulations. So a lot of these are important in advance of the referendum. So the finer details, maybe we don't need everything, but these are crucial to getting, you know, information out there to help people make their vote if we were to do the referendum or we could just go the survey route. But this is stemming from the discussion we had last time. So we do need input on this if we're, if we are to go to the, to the next step.
Okay. Anything else? Alderman Woods?
I'm going to ask why we would do one over the other. And A, is there a cost, or that would be B, is there a cost to the referendum? Or there's a cost to each, I guess.
Manager Murmas?
Well, the only reason we're, we're here tonight, when we brought this up the first time, council seemed to not want to eliminate it from consideration and we were going to put the survey out there. And then at the last meeting, Alderman Carr had asked, should we do a referendum? So from our perspective, it's really your choice as the leaders in the community, what you want to do, what you think your constituents would, would like the most to make their voices heard. So logistically, as far as the referendum, we know obviously there's key dates that we have to meet and we're approaching those key dates, which is why we're, we're kind of here tonight. So as far as costs, I don't know if there's a lot of costs. I think it's a nominal or minimum cost, but I'll let Attorney Bond answer that.
Attorney Bond?
The cost would be the cost to prepare the resolution. There's no cost to file it, there's no cost to submit it to the clerk, there's no cost to have it printed on the ballot. So that would be no cost to the city for that, other than my time.
Is there a, Alderman Woods?
Follow-up, I'll go back to the original question, one versus the other. So if it's a non-binding referendum. I, I guess I, I'm confused of why we do one over the other. Seems like we're back to the same thing of everybody up there voting, right? Which almost seems like we're trying to avoid voting, but.
Manager Murmas?
Back to us voting.
I guess it's your preference from, from what we would do with this, if not doing a referendum, we'd obviously get the information out in the newsletter, which we would do with the referendum regardless.
Right.
We would probably have some sort of online survey forum or whatever. The details really haven't been hashed out on that, but like you said, be similar, online input, maybe an insert in the city newsletter, maybe something in the water bill. I don't know, we haven't gotten that far yet, but something like that.
Attorney Bond?
Yeah, I mean either the survey or the referendum, neither would be a bind, would be binding and ultimately whatever happens, whichever direction you go, if it gets the majority of the people who responded to the survey want it to go forward or if the majority of the people voting on the referendum question, it still comes back to the council. You have to make a determination, do you want to vote? You can ignore the survey, you can ignore the results of that either way, but there's, it's ultimately going to be up to the council to determine, one, if you're going to move forward with it and secondly, are there any additional restrictions if you decide to move forward with that as well? So, but you get a bigger, you know, a slightly bigger response from people that go out to vote in the primaries. A few things on the ballot in this, in this area that will bring people out, so you may get a little more feedback. And the other thing is that, you know, if somebody has a chicken next door to them and they don't like it, then you can say, well, we put it out to the people and the people spoke and so we're the voice of the people and, and so you got.
But it wasn't binding, so the people actually didn't speak, they whispered.
Even a whisper is a direction, so.
Okay. Alderman Ames?
So I, when we talked about this before, I had tried to reach out to as many residents as I could to get feedback on whether they want this or not want it and my feedback was all over the board. So I think doing, well, I initially said the survey too, but the referendum, we've learned a little bit more about now, at least it gives people the opportunity to weigh in it, as Attorney Bond just said. A lot of times we've done surveys in the city and we get very minimal response, just, I know we've been optimistic that we'll hear from people, but I feel like there's people that come out to vote, that at least if there's a question on there, they'll have an opportunity to give their answer and then at least we've got more feedback than just a few random people that, you know, we could all talk to just in our, in our ward. So I'm very supportive of doing the referendum and having that on the ballot so that people can give us their opinion in that route.
Has the city had any requests from residents for, about chickens or what our policies were that anybody's aware of? Director Springer?
On occasion, we get people that will call. It's not frequent, I can tell you that, maybe a couple times a year and we tell them what the rules are. Currently, they're prohibited. We do get calls from residents who have neighbors that have chickens and they ask us to go out and do code enforcement and we, we do that. But it's not an overwhelming amount of people that we call that are interested in chickens.
Alderman Woods? Okay. Alderwoman Fonseca?
So other than just code enforcement, have you actually received complaints of nuisance or anything like that?
Director Springer?
Yes. So rodents that are attracted, chickens becoming loose and wandering around the neighborhood or in the street, those are the majority of the complaints that we got. I think in the past few years, we've gotten 14 complaints of chickens running around outside of coops. And then we, the police have responded and tried to track down the owners.
Follow-up?
Yeah. So with respect to those complaints, you would just have to enforce them even if the chickens were approved, let's say, so it would be the same complaints. It wouldn't be something new about why are they even there? That's what I wanted to know specifically.
Correct. If, if they're out and about right now, they're not allowed at all in the city, so the enforcement aspect is unique to get rid of them. If they were out and about and they were allowed, we, you know, police would handle it as kind of a matter of you need to make sure they're enclosed. We'd probably go out and do an inspection to make sure everything met the requirements.
Alderman Woods?
I'm not trying to stop either one of these things. I'm trying to understand, after we go through this process, we, right, we just heard that we do surveys and very few people answered the survey, so that means we're not going to have any, you know, you'll read a moment from that feedback. And so the thought process then is to do the non-binding referendum at the election, which will be at the next election. So that'll put it on the back page and the majority of people don't turn the page to even vote. I can tell you, following elections closely for probably close to 30 years now, that we're going to wind up with the same, albeit you might get a few more people, yeses or nos. It's not going to be significant. So that's my question, what are we trying to figure out to make the decision? As the attorney said, ultimately, we're going to make the decision. So I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying, why are we adding five more steps to get to where we want to go? I mean, if, we could go in our ward and go, come back with 20 surveys, yeses or nos, and bring it to the council, right? I mean, you know, that's all, I'm just trying to get to the answer faster. This seems like. to the answer faster, this seems like a lot of things that we do that we drag out for a long time, I just don't see all the necessity of all the intermediate steps, I think it's answerable, but that's just me, and again, not taking a side, just looking at the process. You know, staff's gonna be working on this, we're gonna elicit all this time going back and forth, you know, seems to me a simpler process to get the yes or no, if everybody actively goes and gets some feedback from, from residents, you don't have to answer from everybody, but you kinda know your, your ward, where you would go, go actively, get some people, Tony, I think Alderman Catalano brought up, he had people in his ward that were complaining about them, so, I mean, you can go get that person and the people around that, you'll, that's kind of pretty relevant feedback, so, just me.
Alderman Carr?
Okay, so you go get feedback from the people you know, all right, and say, all the people you know in your ward, and not going door knocking, just the people you know, say 10 or 15 of them, and they all vote no, and that's what you come back with, but what about the other 15 houses that, 16 houses that want chickens that you didn't go to? So how would you decipher which right, which wrong, with the city, with your people in your ward, why?
Well, I would imagine that if I went to pick a number, everybody in Wooddale is not voting on chickens at the referendum, which is not binding anyway, not everybody's doing the survey, I get what you said, you want 30 surveys from Ward Two, I'll, I'll get you 30 surveys, I won't pick them, I don't have a horse in the race, or a chicken. Boom, I'm here Monday through Friday. I'm just trying to get there, I don't want to talk about chickens for, you know, six months, when's the election?
March 17th.
March 17th, there you go, that's all. Counter, counter, I'm not gonna go out and look for, like, people that just hate chickens.
Hey, I'm, all I'm saying is, you may go to 15 houses, 30 houses, wherever they be, they all may hate one thing, but then somebody else that you didn't go to may want that.
I mean, if we're, since I'm doing the referendum, I'm.
That's all I'm saying.
I'm not, not gonna stop it, but I'm, I'm just trying to get to the answer faster.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Whatever the answer is.
So, I can see both sides of it, right, waiting for the referendum, I like the idea of the referendum, putting it out there, but I also agree with Alderman Woods that people probably aren't gonna.
I rest my case.
He's here Monday through Friday, I, I agree with him that I don't think people are gonna turn the page over, or be responsive, can we, is there an opportunity to do both? Can we maybe do the referendum, as much as I don't want to wait that long either, rather get the ball rolling, but maybe get some feedback on who is responding, responding to the surveys, we can do that immediately versus waiting until March of next year, get some feedback, and then see maybe if we want to also proceed with the referendum as well, and do kind of a comparison?
Director Springer?
It is entirely up to the group in front of you, whatever you would like to do, we are happy to do it.
Alderwoman Ames?
So, I guess the timing of it, yes, it is a, a long way out, but in the meantime, there's winter, and even if something did move forward prior to that, I, I don't know about having chickens, but I can't imagine winter's the ideal time to start a chicken coop, so if the election is the spring, and something, you know, we got results from that, and possibly a survey, or, or one or the other, we're looking at springtime anyway to make some kind of a decision, and that would seem more conducive to actually, if it got approved, that's the time of the year to do something like that, I don't know, Jay, or Alderman Carr, I know you're more in tune on the chicken.
Yeah, it's more like springtime, except that's when the hen's laid, the hatchlings.
So, so winter isn't the ideal time anyway, so I feel like this is okay timing for, over the winter months, to gather information.
I have a question, are chickens considered pets or livestock?
Right now, they're defined as livestock, right now, in the city code.
Okay.
Depends on your frame of mind, I guess.
Do they require veterinary care?
I do not know the answer to that, I would assume there are vets that handle that.
Okay, so their only useful life is when they're laying eggs, if they're livestock, I take it, not gonna feed a chicken that's not laying eggs anymore, is that correct?
Oh, you do what you want with it.
Okay.
Only if they get bird food.
Okay, but do we have a slaughter, slaughter facility, since we're not allowing that?
So, what do you do when an animal dies?
They bury it, okay. General Cravere? Alderman Woods?
I just wanted to address the timing, I'm not worried that it takes us four months to decide what time of year that is, because we decided in 30 days whether they built or didn't build, really irrelevant, it's the amount of time that we're gonna go back and forth on the subject matter before we, it sounds like everybody wants to have a referendum, so we can push it down the road six months and have the same conversation we're having today, that nobody wants to commit to, that's my issue with it.
Okay.
That being said, let's have a referendum.
Is that a motion?
It's not.
All right, so I think we're not moving any further with the discussion, or we're gonna take any action on this? No action's gonna be taken?
So what type of action are we looking for?
Motion.
For the referendum.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, and I don't think we need any more discussion, roll call, please.
Alderman Artwoods?
No.
Alderman Kurelli?
No.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alder, Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Motion carries, all right, got a referendum, anything else? Items to be considered at future meetings, Wooddale Park District, Special Use Calgary, Calgary Church on 12, on December 11th, Building Code Update Part Two, also December 11th, Building Code Update Part Three, January 8th, Udo Text Amendment, February 12th, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Hang on, hang on, we wanna add one more thing.
Oh, somebody want to add something today?
Yeah, chickens, April of 2026 to be revisited.
March 17th. You're a few months off.
March, April, you gotta hit the results.
Results aren't certified until April 7th.
There you go, I'm correct.
I've done this before, so.
All right, got that, motion, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
Favor?
Aye.
Or adjourned, thank you.
I'd like to call the Public Health Safety and Judiciary Ethics Committee to order, the minute taker, request the state members are present, next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the October 23rd, Public Health, Safety and Judiciary Ethics meeting.
I'll make that motion?
Second?
No, Eric, you were the first, right?
Yeah.
No, no, I said I'll entertain a motion.
Okay.
So we have a motion, we have a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, next, request for an additional class RVG liquor license, chief, take it away.
Yeah, as the mayor read it last week, Egg House is requesting a liquor license, of the RVG class, because they'd also like to have video gaming, previous tenant Christie's had the same license.
That's it?
That's it.
Well, that's short and to the point, I like that, questions, yes?
Alderman Woods?
Little levity, how late do they open, and do they plan to stay open later? Does anybody know the?
I think it's only like three or four.
They're open till three?
I believe so.
Presently, does anybody know?
Google might, I don't know.
Huh?
Google might, see.
All right, that was, I was just wondering, since they're getting to gambling, it's, I don't know how many people go there at lunchtime to gamble, but, hey, no other questions? Oh, City Manager Murmas?
Google says they're open till three every day.
Yeah, we, we. We have Google Junior up here, so, Alderman Catalano?
I'll make the motion, do we already have a motion?
No.
I'll make the motion.
So now we have a motion, a second, there being no further questions, roll call.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Kurelli?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes, next, items to be considered at future meetings, there are none, is there anything anybody'd like on there, there isn't, oh, shocking, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
I'd like to call to order the Finance and Administration Committee, the minute taker note the same members are present, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of October 9th, 2025, for the Finance and Administration Committee.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any questions, comments, corrections?
No.
Are none, that passes, I do have one report and recommendation this evening regarding the committee and council meeting start time, I'd like to make a motion to start the committee and council meetings at 7:00 PM rather than 7:30.
A second, that's a motion, right?
Yes, I made a motion.
A second.
Alderman Artwoods?
Yeah, what's, what's the big driver to start it a half hour early, I mean, we've, we've done it this way for a couple years, I would say.
In my opinion, just, it's a, it's a late time to start a meeting, and it's just nice to get started a little bit earlier for the meeting in case they run late, and you're just starting a, a little bit earlier.
So, convenience?
Yep.
Oh, I'm, I'm, it's not my.
Alderman Carr?
I know, well, convenience, I have two little kids at home, and it's nice to get them, say goodnight right before they fall asleep, if I'm able to, you know, it is kinda nice, I know I'm not retired or close to retirement, you know, so I don't have to worry about that stuff, but it is kinda nice to see them last time before they fall asleep.
And I, I can appreciate that, I'll have to say that for 40 years, we've held it at 7:30, when everybody ran for office, it was at 7:30, when they accepted and swore in, it was at 7:30, I would imagine everybody could come up with excuses or reasons that they would rather be home, it's the commitment we made, it's one night a week, fully appreciate you wanting to be home with your kids, I would like to be home, I have many things I could do other than be here, but I ran, and I ran to represent the people, this is when we said it was gonna be held, this is the way it's been held, I don't see any reason to, you know, change it a half hour, which doesn't seem like a lot, right, but then seven goes to 6:30, I think staff did a pretty good study on all the surrounding communities, most of them are 7:00 or 7:30, if you look at a lot of them, the ones that start earlier, they hold their committee of the whole meeting, then their council meeting, so their meetings are longer, I would say in general, the history has shown that these meetings get shorter and shorter, so the 22 minutes that you spend here, except for nights like tonight, because we have the building code and chickens, and, and then trying to save time, starting early or by a half hour, but again, so, and the reason, wasn't to pick on anybody saying it's a personal reason, but I'm looking at the, the community too, so for people to come here, to present, to hold hearings, for residents to show up, most of them work till 5:00 or 5:30, get home, eat dinner, get ready, fix, come over here, the earlier we have the meetings, the more likely it is to chill participation by residents.
So you're not?
We haven't voted yet.
No, Alder, I was just gonna call Alderman Fonseca, if you were finished.
Are you done?
Yep, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we should support change, change is a constant, we should kind of roll with it, and it's okay, just because we've been doing something for 40 years doesn't mean that we need to continue to do that, technology is changing, people's lives are changing, work-life balance, right, across the board, not just if you have little children or not, right, so, everybody's held conscious as well, it gets dark earlier, so I think all of these contribute to that factor as well.
Any other, oh, Attorney Bond?
Just from a formality standpoint, my recommendation would be, the motion would be to amend the city code, section 2.205A, because the time, the start time is actually in the city code for 7:30, so amend that to 7 o'clock, it would be the motion, and if the mover and the secondor accepts it, that would be the formal way of getting that before the council, at a future council meeting.
Okay, so I, yeah, I amend that, for what you said, yes.
Jason was the second, Jason.
Are you okay to change, or?
Yes.
How to have to describe that? Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just wanna address the change thing, change for its own sake is not governance, the question isn't what is new, it's this, it's what serves the public, so this isn't, this is not only about us, it's about everybody else, it's about the community, it's about the residents that come here, and I know we argue that, could argue that not a lot do, but on occasions where there's heated debate, or items that are very active, which very could be, one of the, the chicken thing, could be a lot of people showing up, the later time is more conducive to them to get here, it's, it's not about the few people up here, it's about the many people out there, that's, that's who we're governing for, and we should make it more available to them, to be less exclusive, is really not the right direction, you know, and again, if nobody wants to make that commitment, they don't have to make the commitment, we chose to be up here, right, now we're gonna choose to limit the time that we're here, and again, I know people are gonna say, well, Eric, it's only a half hour, what's the big deal, because the half hour then becomes an hour, because the next group says, if we can do it at 7, why don't we do it at 6:30, right? So while we're doing that, and we're moving everything forward, what do we do with the meetings that we have before the meetings, what time do those start? Right, the streetscape committee, the infrastructure, or whatever that group is, that all the chairman approved the streets, programs and construction projects, when, when do we put those in? Green, I don't, I forgot what the green committee's now called, where do we put those, when do those start? Do those start at 5?
Some of the meetings don't, they don't meet on the same day, they, not every meeting, not every other committee meets prior to.
Well, to make everything convenient for everybody, we tend to stack things, so when do we do the ribbon cutting, so it's more than one thing, this isn't just, you know, I'm not, I'm not just sitting here arguing, and, and again, I'll go, for me personally, since we're making it personal, it's hard for me to get here at 7:30, and when the trains start coming, hopefully you're on the right side of the freight train when you're trying to get here, and the timing's right, I mean, I just don't see the reason to arbitrarily, because a couple people decide that they want it to be earlier, that, that we change something that we've done for 40 years.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second.
I guess I do have one, so just to clarify though, when would, so like tonight, we got here at 6 for the special.
Special Events Committee meeting. When would those meetings move to?
Right status.
Oh, mayor, please.
It would probably stay the same, but like, Special Events, we've met a few times on Wednesdays, just like other committees and things like that, and we've started at 5:30, so. And this wouldn't even take place until next year, I believe, right? Am I correct, Mr. Bond? Because don't we approve the meeting, meeting dates in December?
Attorney bond?
Yeah, you're required by law to publish the date and time of your meetings in January each year for your upcoming calendar year.
Oh.
So once it's set for January, that locks on you inside of calendar year. For the meantime, there's been what needs to change.
Attorney bond?
Well, you can call special meetings and you just have to give notice 48 hours in advance. You have to notify the press and put it on the website if you're going to do that. If you've got one meeting where you need to alter it from 7:30, 7:00 to 7:30, there's another time.
Anything else?
One last argument that I won't know changes that I'll put up. Illinois requires all meetings to be at a time that is convenient to the public, not convenient to whoever happens to sit up here right now. Not convenient for retirees, not convenient for someone who gets off work early. Again, I'll, I can't say it enough, it's about the residents and all the things that happen here. And while they don't happen every evening and participation rates are low, changing those times will have a chilling effect, as sure as I'm sitting here arguing to keep it the same. I think it's a big deal to stay out another half hour.
Alderman Kurriely?
I don't think we're afraid of the dark yet.
Yeah, I don't like the change from 7:30 to an earlier time, but what sort of convinces me is a counterargument to what Alderman Woods says is that the list of other communities that start earlier, they do, many of them do attract large numbers of residents to their meetings. Those villages and cities are also able to run their meetings earlier so they don't interfere with dinner hour and other issues like that. So I think that, when I think about what other towns are able to do and their residents come out to their meetings, I think it could happen here too at an earlier time. So I, I could go with 7:00.
Alderman Art Woods?
So again, to respond to that, again, the other communities, the ones that have the earlier starting hour of 7:00, a lot of them piggyback their meetings together. A lot of those communities have had those times for years. Those communities have, are a different community, a different demographic. I would argue that have the ability to be there earlier, you could probably make it at 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock for them and they'd be able to make it. This is Wood Dale. Wood Dale's done it this way for as long as I can remember, 40 years. Again, I don't see any reason to change it. And to make the comparative, you know, then we could start arguing, let me back up. So Elmer's, they do a lot there, so I know them a little better. They have meetings at 1:30 in the afternoon. They have a finance committee meeting. They have.
County has earlier.
Public Works meetings. Their committees aren't, they have separate breakout committees, as does ATASC. I mean, so when we make the comparative, we're not the same community. We don't run the same, we don't govern the same.
Alderman Kurriely?
Yeah, but usually we look at empty chairs like tonight, so I don't think changing the time to earlier is going to bring out fewer people.
I get it, but I said that. The argument's going to be that nobody's here, but.
Alderman Carr?
I use your favorite word. Why don't we do a referendum or something then and put it with the chickens?
That's not my favorite word, that was your word. You created the referendums, not I.
Well, I'm just saying, like, why don't we get the public's opinion out of them? I mean, I don't see an issue with the 7:00.
I don't see an issue with the 7:30. You took a job, you started the job and now you say I want to start at a different time. Maybe more people can.
Catalano?
I'll call the question.
Roll call. Alderman Art Woods?
Goes without being said, no.
Alderman Kurriely?
Yes.
Alderman Carr?
Yes.
Alderwoman Fonseca?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Artiwoods?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
And that passes. Items to be considered at future meetings.
That's incredible. I just have to make that comment.
City Hall Rehab, December 11th. City Hall Mover Contract, December 11th. Audit Presentation, December 11th. Fire Department TIP, January 8th. New Audit Contract, January 8th. CIP, January 22nd. Does anyone else have anything to add? If there's none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.